Committee on Fiscal Affairs to order the first item of business will be approval of the minutes from our last meeting on January 7th. I'll move them. Do I have a motion for a second? It's been seconded. Any questions, comments, changes? If there are any none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have two action items before we get to the information items and then the subcommittee on investment. First action item is a resolution to authorize the general counsel to execute a university-wide contract to purchase access to academic journals on behalf of all the participating colleges from Springer Science and Business Media LLC without competitive bidding pursuant to law and university regulations. Such purchase shall not exceed $3 million payable in five annual installments. The university will have the right to terminate the contract at any time in its best interest. The university will use this contract with Springer, a premier publisher in scientific and technical journal field, to extend existing and make available university-wide online access to electronic academic journals from Springer Lake. Savings will be achieved by entering into this university-wide agreement. I'll move this item. Is there a second?
Second.
Item has been seconded. Questions?
Just a question, why is it done without competitive bid?
The reason we're doing this without competitive bidding is because Springer is basically the only vendor that provides these type of services for scientific electronic journals. You know, they, the entire catalog is under Springer's proprietary rights, so Springer's the only vendor here.
So it's, opposed to saying it's not without competitive bid, it's really a sole source because there is only a sole source.
There are others, but not in the sciences. J-Stor room, that's a very big provider, but much more in the humanities and social sciences.
Do we know what they judge comparable institutions?
I don't have any comparisons to other institutions, but compared to what we were paying under the existing contract, this amount is in line with what we're paying in existing contracts and-
You mean other, like J-Stor users?
Yes, and-
We're just starting with Springer, is that right?
No, no, we've had a-
Were we doing with Springer?
No, no, we've had, we've had a contract with Springer, and this is to renew that contract.
I see.
Now, by us doing a university-wide procurement, we're going to be generating some savings, really more cost avoidance than it is savings.
Right.
Because the colleges won't have to incur additional costs, they'll be buying off this one university contract.
Right, but we, I just want to repeat, is it, are we comfortable in asking what they do with other comparable institutions?
Yes.
And do they respond to our question?
Yeah, so far Springer, we haven't had any issues with Springer in terms of, you know, they're providing their services to this point, so we're very comfortable with them.
Question. Do you want to, it might be worth it, Matthew, to at least, you know, as we go into this, to see what comparable universities get charged so that we can share that information with the members, if that'll provide a certain level of comfort.
Okay, sure.
Five-year contract.
Five.
Five-year, five-year contract, right, which says it can be terminated at any time.
Thank you.
Any further questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And this motion carries. The next item is a resolution to authorize counsel to execute a contract on behalf of Baruch College with Aventis School of Management without competitive bidding or sole sourcing and pursuant to law and university regulations to continue operating the college's executive masters in programs, executive masters programs in finance, marketing, organizational psychology, and management of human resources in the country of Singapore for two academic years through June 2015. The continuation of this program is necessary to avoid interruption of the current student's course of studies as a result of the recent termination of the college's contract with the original vendor. The contract with an estimated value between $500,000 and $650,000 shall be subject to the approval as deformed by the university's Office of General Counsel. This resolution also calls for the board of trustees of the City University to authorize counsel to execute a contract on behalf of Baruch with the lead chief academy education group, again without competitive bidding and pursuant to law and university regulations, to continue operating the college's executive masters program in finance, marketing, and human resources and global leadership in Taiwan for two academic years through June 2015. The continuation of these programs are necessary to avoid interruption of the current student's course of study as a result of the recent termination of the college's contract with the original vendor. The contract with an estimated value, again between $500 and $650,000, shall be subject to approval as deformed by the Office of General Counsel. I'll move this. Do I have a second?
Second.
Question, what happened to the original contract with the original vendor?
The contract with the original vendor had to be terminated due to what the college and the university felt was a breach of that contract. And so since we have students that are already there in these study abroad programs, we need to do a, without competitive bidding process here so that we can get two new vendors in quickly and not disrupt the students' activities overseas.
And why did we terminate?
I'm going to have either the general counsel or I have the vice president for Finance Administration Group College, Kathy Kopter, with the chairs.
We would need to do that in executive session. And I'd prefer to do that at the board level, if you don't mind.
Are there any further questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Now, I want your information items regarding the state's executive budget and the city's preliminary budget recommendations.
Thanks, Chair Loder. Good afternoon, everyone. It's that time of the year again where budget season and the governor has introduced his executive budget, and the mayor's also issued his preliminary budget. The governor's executive budget was issued two weeks ago, and last Tuesday the mayor issued his preliminary budget, so we wanted to go through the recommendations today.
Great.
The analysis on the state executive budget was issued to you all a few weeks back, a few days after the governor issued his budget, and it's also on CUNY website, so everyone would like to take a look at that. But I want to go through this PowerPoint presentation this afternoon. We'll start with the state executive budget first. For the senior colleges, the operating budget recommended an increase of 96, almost $96 million over the current year's budget, which is 4.6 percent increase. And there were two main sources that comprised this increase. The first one was $34.8 million in mandatory needs funding for fringe benefits, health insurance, welfare fund payments, pensions, social security, and the like. The remainder was $60.8 million that represents the additional revenue that is going to be captured by the university next year. We have a $300 increase that's going to be take, that is going to be effective in fall 2013, that was approved by the trustees, so the $61 million covers that additional revenue and gives us the authority to spend those funds next year. The $61 million also includes $14 million that covers the waivers of tuition that the university is mandated to provide under the new state higher education agreement for TAP awards. As you'd all recall, when the state higher ed agreement was issued in the summer of 2011, it called for SUNY and CUNY to cover any TAP awards above the maximum award of $5,000. And so next year, our tuition with the $300 increase is going to be $5,730 for a senior college resident student, and so we have to cover that gap between what a student receives from TAP and the difference with tuition, and proportional for students who receive part-time TAP, and that's $14 million of the $61 million. Okay, the next slide is a table that shows the three main funding sources for our senior colleges, state aid, city support, and tuition and other revenue, and you can see the changes there that we just spoke about. State aid is being increased by 34.8 million for the fringe benefit increases, and tuition by 60.8 million, for a total of 95.6. Brings our total budget for the senior colleges up to over $2.1 billion for next year. Okay, for the community colleges, there was a total increase of $5.9 million over the current year levels, and there was a few different recommendations that made up that difference. One, the basic one was for enrollment growth. Although the community college enrollment for this fall is actually down, the number that the state was carrying in its base budget was lower than what our actual enrollment was. So the state is now recognizing our current enrollment, and that generates another $3.7 million in state aid for our community colleges. There was no increase recommended for base aid. $2,272 is the current year rate, and that's what the governor's recommending for next year. The same thing happened during last year's executive budget, the governor kept the base aid the same, and then the legislature added back $150 to bring us to the current level of 2,272. And so that's going to be a big part of our lobbying effort going forward with the legislature is to try to get that base aid increased again. In the university's budget request, we were asking for a $260 base aid increase. The SUNY community colleges asked for the same amount in their budget request, and so again, that's going to be a major part of our lobbying effort going forward, and that would generate about $22 million in additional aid for the community colleges. One other item I just want to bring up regarding the base aid is we're asking for $260, which would bring us up to over $2,500 per FTE, but keep in mind that in 2009, the base aid per FTE for our community college was $2,675. So because of budget reductions since then, we're down over $403 per FTE. So the $260 would bring us closer to 2009 levels, but we're hoping for a multi-year plan that the state can get us back to at least that level. There was $700,000 that was provided for community college building rentals. Building rentals are funded 50 percent state, 50 percent city, so now we need the city to put up their share in the city's executive budget to fully fund that. There was a legislative add of $544,000 for childcare centers that the governor has not included in his executive budget historically, and the state legislature has put back, so again, that needs to be part of our lobbying efforts with the legislature as well. And then there was $2 million effort for a new initiative that the governor announced, which is the Next Generation New York Job Linkage Program. So this $2 million is on top of the amount that we receive from base aid. This is a new pot of money that is available to our community colleges, and I'm going to get into this program a little bit more on the next slide. The $2 million is being tied specifically to outcomes for our community colleges and their students. And so the governor set aside $2 million for the CUNY community colleges, and $3 million for the SUNY community colleges, and based on the set of criteria that are listed on this slide, our colleges would be eligible to receive this additional funding. And so when you see the criteria here, you see that it's all tied to outcomes. Degree completion, the number of on-time completions, and student transfers to other institutions and higher ed, the completions by students considered academically at risk due to economic disadvantage, and the last one, students who are making academic progress. So this, again, is on top of the base aid, it's a new, it's a new pot of money that's available to the community colleges. There was another piece to this Next Generation New York Job Linkage Program that the governor proposed, and that was tied to full-time student base aid, and that's on slide seven. And this is tied specifically to students in credit-bearing certificate, associate of occupational studies degrees, and associate of applied science degree programs. So it's really tied to those workforce development programs at our community colleges. And what the governor is doing here is he's tying base aid for the students in those programs to certain outcomes. So this is a change to what we've had in the past where if we had a student in a community college, we received base aid. Now the governor is asking that there be some stipulations put on this base aid, and you could see there from the description, the governor is asking that the, a partnership be established between the community colleges and employers that will help train students for specific occupations and provide a pipeline of students to local industry, and that the programs at our community colleges in these areas are tied to labor market data that has been identified. So again, this is a new program, we've had a lot of discussions with folks from the governor's office about it, and they've been receptive to our feedback. The legislature will now, will now be able to add their comments, and we'll discuss this further with the governor's office and with both CUNY and SUNY. But again, this, this piece of the program is tied specifically to community college base aid.
It's only about 2 million.
Right, and it's, it's, again, this is a very small component of our total community college enrollment.
2 million.
Any connection, I may not know exactly what I'm asking, but the relationship of this to pathways, if any?
Not, not related at all. This is really, this is tying programs in our community colleges to local industries.
Yes.
So for the SUNY community colleges who are upstate and maybe in areas that there may be, you know, maybe one or two very prominent industries in those areas, there is, you know, certainly those linkages between the community college and those local industries.
This idea emanated from the commission that I was part of-
Right.
That the governor appointed me to. It makes a lot more sense for SUNY upstate campuses than it does for CUNY, and that's why for us, this is a relatively minor, almost off-balance sheet kind of event for us.
Just, I know that the, the city is implementing similar kind of accountability issues with the COPE program, and it's having some tremendously adverse impact on that program, not intentionally, but, so I know John Mogalescu is working on that, but I would just be concerned because I know the COPE program is in, is in some serious problems, basically because they, some of the things they ask the students to do directly impacts their, their economic well-being, and it's not necessarily consistent with their well-being.
This is, this is going to be a minor little thing for us. I mean, we're so huge in a city that has so many employers that this is an easy thing for us to do, so.
And most of our community colleges do already have advisory boards with local industry and local employers, so a lot of the, the criteria that the governor is asking our community colleges to do are already, already implemented. Next slide is a similar chart for the community colleges as we went back earlier to the senior colleges, and you can see there the three funding sources, state aid, city support, and tuition and other revenue, and state aid is increased by almost $6 million, so it's a 3 percent increase in state aid. Okay, slide nine, financial aid highlights. The governor did not propose any changes to the, to the TAP program, which was a good thing, so TAP program remains the same. And just a reminder, the state higher ed agreement from summer 2011 also called for CUNY and SUNY to work on an analysis and to make recommendations to the, to the state as to recommendations on how the tuition assistance program can be changed in terms of implementation, dollar amounts, income cutoffs, and things like that. So we are working with SUNY on that, it's due in November 2013, so we do have a little bit of time, but wanted to remind you all that that is something that we're going to have to all take a look at later this year. All right, last couple of slides, just want to get into what our state budget priorities are, and this is something that I talked about briefly in previous slides. State aid for community colleges, again, we're asking for a $260 increase, that would generate a little over $21 million. We're also asking the state for $2 million for veteran services, and you can see the bullet there that veteran enrollment has grown over 53 percent across all CUNY campuses since 2008, and 233 percent in our community colleges, and so we need to make sure we're providing the level of services, both academic and counseling services, to those returning veterans. And some of our other priorities, the CUNY leads program. Last year we were fortunate enough to get a million dollars funded for this program, however, that was just a small piece of the total need. We still need another 1.5 in order to fully fund that program. That provides vocational and academic services to our students with disabilities. The childcare item, we talked about earlier, that $544,000 that the legislature has historically put back, and we're expecting them to do so for next year. And then this last one, developmental work experience during college, is a new program that we would like the state to fund for next year, and this is to provide work experience for our students while they're attending CUNY. Currently, about 30 percent of our students throughout the university work more than 20 hours per week. However, most of our students that all work more than 20 hours a week are working in areas that are not related to the field that they're studying. They're working in retail, they're working in a local, you know, local store in their neighborhood, they're not getting that work experience that they need for the degree that they're pursuing. And so we want to have linkages with local businesses that can provide the internships for our students while they're in their CUNY career, so that when they get out, they're more marketable in this tough job market that they have relevant experience in what they're studying.
Can you expand on that, because we do currently have programs in place on each campus. So are you-
We have a lot of local programs that are campus-specific. We don't have one university-wide initiative whereby we're making those linkages on a university-wide level. So some colleges do this very well, some of our other colleges-
Struggle.
Exactly, need some improvement in doing this, and so we want to have this university-wide initiative whereby all of our students are getting those benefits.
And how do you intend to implement that?
Well, you know, expecting that we are going to get funding from, from the state, and, you know, we're talking to the legislature about it already, this will be something that will be worked through our Office of Academic Affairs. John Mogalescu's office with both John and Suri Deitch have been developing this proposal, and they'll be coordinating with the colleges with the available funding that hopefully will come through in the state adopted budget.
That's all I wanted to say, thank you.
Okay, to follow up on the question of participatory, the implementation is one piece, but the monitoring will be the other piece, because sometime we, I feel like we have those university-wide projects, and once we disseminate the fund to colleges, usually we'll sometime lose track of how things have been administered, so monitoring will be one big piece, because as a student, it's very important for students to get that experience, because when you finish, when you get your degree and you go to the, to look for a job, they ask you, do you have any experience? Well, I was going to school full-time, I couldn't work in my field, but now they're going to ask you, well, you're only student, you don't have any experience, you can't get a job. But with this project, I think that's going to create more opportunity for students to actually have that experience while they're going to school, and they will be ready once they get their degree. So it's very, it is a very important project, and I would really love the university to keep a close eyes on that project, and if we can get the funding this year, to even advocate to increase that funding so we can have more projects in that sense.
Great, that's a good point about monitoring.
30 percent of our students work more than 20 hours a week? How does that compare to comparable institutions, if we know?
We'll get you the data on how it compares to comparable institutions, but-
It's extraordinary.
For, right, for large, public, higher ed institutions, it's, if it's not at the top, it's near the top.
It's, it's not that atypical for a residential, a non-residential urban university. I mean, residential campuses don't have anywhere near that kind of percentage of students working.
But, but community schools, it's, this is typical?
Yeah, very typical.
Okay, and then let me just spend a minute on the city's preliminary budget, which the mayor issued last week. The good news is that there were no further reductions that were proposed to CUNY's community colleges, so that was, that was very positive development. And the preliminary budget also provided funding to continue three of our Commission on Economic Opportunity programs at the same levels as the current year. The Accelerated Study and Associate Program, the ASAP Initiative, which is funded at $6.8 million for next year, CUNY Prep, and the Civic Justice Corps. Okay, next steps, the state budget is due to be adopted by April 1st. We're hearing that, everyone, in the legislature, and up in Albany is very motivated to try to get this done early this year, so we're hoping that that's the case. The mayor will issue his, his last executive budget sometime in, in late April 2013, I should say, and of course, we'll continue to vote, to work with both the executive legislative branches at both the state and the city to ensure fiscal stability for our colleges. So that's all. Any questions?
Colonel?
I know you've given this to us before, and I apologize, but could you just go over, you mentioned that enrollment at community colleges was down. Could you just go over a brief summary about enrollment and-
Sure, sure. Enrollment was down overall at our community colleges, a few percentage points, I think it was between two and three percentage points for fall semester. We're still looking at the spring semester numbers, they're not finalized yet, but for fall, we were down a couple of percentage points. A lot of it was due to the fact that the university and the college were working better on managing enrollment, especially at our community colleges, that the, we've had historic enrollment levels over the last 10 years, and we wanted to make sure that our students were getting the right level of services, and so we've been doing a much closer monitoring of the enrollment levels with the colleges and planning what the enrollment levels should be with each of our community colleges. And so that's partly the reason for the enrollment levels coming down.
We grew too fast. That was an aberration. You could map it back to the economy and so forth, and I think what we're seeing is a more equilibrium, and I wouldn't, I would imagine that we will see some tick down until we get to a point of where we really should be. We grew much too fast, and I don't, you know, it was a good thing on revenue, but a bad thing on providing the necessary instruction that we would need with full-time people, and great stress on our physical capacity. So I don't think it's such a bad thing, I think there's some.
Did the senior colleges' experience is similar to-
Senior colleges overall for fall semester were down a little bit, it was about flat, but it was down less than 1 percent. The undergraduate programs were basically flat compared to fall 2011. The graduate programs did experience a decline of about 5 percent, and that's something that has been felt throughout the country in terms of graduate enrollment, and also at both public and private institutions here in New York City.
And most of the graduate decrease has been in aid programs.
Been what?
In education programs.
One of the big initiatives that we will be announcing soon is a real focus on expanding our masters programs, especially in some of the science areas where we know there's great demand and where we really have to get the campuses to start thinking about those programs. Here in the city, with all of the efforts that the mayor in particular have instituted, there is a great demand that we're not pumping out students ready to, to engage in, and we really have to do a lot more about this. Things like data analytics and large data analyses, I mean, there is tremendous demand, and we need more of those programs. I addressed the Council of Presidents this morning in our retreat, which happens, when is it, in March, sometime, with the presidents, that's going to be a major focus of where we're going to be going academically.
Any further comments, questions? Thank you, Matthew. Okay. We'll now leave the Committee on Fiscal Fair, and move into the Subcommittee on Investment. The first item is the approval of our minutes from November 5th. I'll move them. Second? Any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye. I have two information items. The first one is in public session, the second one will be in executive session. So, first is the performance update by our chief investment officer, Janet Crown.
Hey, I'll be brief before we go into executive session with Mark Fowler. The performance has really bounced back since calendar year 2011. As you can see from the report, within the Cambridge Report actually, on page seven, the pool now stands at $177 million, having returned 11.4% for the calendar year. This on a preliminary basis puts us in the 27th percentile of returns of our peers. But I, I would stress that that is preliminary. We're up 3% in January, so we're headed in the right direction for this year. And with that, unless there are any questions, I will turn it over to Mark.
Any questions about the performance that are being done? I'll let anything go into executive session. So, move.
Okay.
Okay, we're in exec session. We'll be back out when we're done with the presentation. Thank you.